It is 7:01, time to call this meeting to order. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Taylor, if you'd like to leave some new things first, please say.
Dear Lord, we wish that you will provide us with the knowledge, the strength, the courage to make the decisions for the entire city of North Bellevue. We hope that, pray that you keep us all safe, healthy, and happy, and that we keep positive thoughts and prevailed, strong minds in your side of the nation.
Call Roman.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Dunphy?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to go into Executive Session, ORC 121-22 for Personnel and Legal Matters and Heading Litigation.
I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy, do you invite them?
I'll be inviting in our legal counsel from the insurance company, Mr. Savington and Mr. Frank.
If you can hear me?
Yes. He just asked me what could I have. All right. Motion to come out of Executive Session, I move.
Second. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting? Any comments or discussion on those? Motion to adopt, motion to approve. I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
All right. We are to the.
Actually, Mr. Dunphy, can I make a motion to amend the agenda, inserting now as the end item to discuss the city manager's contract and pay?
Yes. Okay.
It's too late now, it's too late. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So I believe the motion is to offer Scott a three-year contract boosting his pay up to $60,000, which was the old city manager's rate of pay, and also to offer merit-based bonuses every year upon a valuation. So if I could get a second on that motion.
Second.
Um, Mr. Grant? Is that a roll call? Are you good?
No, no, no.
Okay. Is that enough? Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
All right. Let's see here. Auditor Treasurers Report. Mr. Savington, take it away. Before I start, does anybody need paper copy?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. Okay. I'll take some paper copies. They are in your emails, so they're.
They're excited.
The Treasurers are.
Oh.
They are.
Sorry. I'm sorry, Charlie.
Okay. So we've got several reports to get through because I was unfortunately quite sick with food poisoning at the last meeting times for reports. And then we just decided to keep them all together with one, so I'm going to go as quick as possible. So we'll start with the Treasurer's Reports, February 2021. Mr. Millane, apologize for not being able to make it. I believe his work schedule conflicted with the meeting tonight. You'll see on page one, $2.699 million in account balances, nearly, excuse me, $2.7 million. Next page is the interest, year-to-date, $359. I think at this point last year, we had like $8,000, so until the Fed raises the rates and inflation picks up, we're getting essentially nothing. On the next page, you'll see the clear cash reconciliation of the sweep account. So you'll have payroll debits at the top, checks cleared, things like bounce checks right here, as well as the credits, revenues. You'll see things like the power rental fee we get, as well as water sewer revenue, income taxes, vacant registration, et cetera, et cetera. Coming down at the bottom with a outstanding check and a bank balance. On the next page, you'll see a book register and book reconciliation and the difference between those two numbers he finds after you adjust for a charge back on a check, which bounced, not our check, a check paid to us that bounced, was $0 difference, which is the same thing my reconciliation came up with for March 2021. You will see $2.637 million and a half, $504 in interest, so it's like we're getting about $110 a month. Again, the reconciliations, and then again, no difference between what I posted, Judy and I posted to the books and what Mike sees with banking accounts. So that's the Treasurer's Reports. For the Auditor's Reports, we'll start with February 2021 and credit card review. The first page, I just say quickly, there was a small increase in February in city funds, something for currently the city manager and I to keep our eyes on is the recreation and pool fund has fallen into negative territory. This isn't super common, but it's also not super uncommon for us, and it's not to a problem, it's where we need council action, and we'll know further where that looks after the pool season ends, as well as property tax payments, certainly. The general fund held a steady balance this month, and I have one typo I see. We brought in $401,658, $324,110 was spent, which is a difference of plus, not minus, $77,547. You'll see that breakdown on the next page by fund. Again, seeing the negative pool or recreation balance. On the next page, are our funds healthy? General fund continues to be just under half of a healthy balance. Street funds are right in the vicinity, recreation fund coming up short, capital fund in healthy territory, water fund is in striking distance, and hopefully by the end of the year will be in healthy territory, which will be our first upgrade since I took over as auditor and during this council, and then sewer fund just over half. I included a new breakdown on the next page. This is the general fund expense report. If you would like to see by department where the money came out of the general fund in February, that is here. I included a few wine items at the bottom under general other, because I remember as a council member how annoyed I was when I heard the word "other," so I thought you'd appreciate the actual itemization. The next page, just expenses and revenue report. And moving on to March, and then I'm finished. March, and one thing to note about March, income tax revenue begins to pick up somewhat. You may notice the recreation fund, this continues under zero. The city's balances held even, and we spent $10,519 and four pennies more than we brought in, which considering we brought in over half a million dollars means we were pretty steady. The fund breakdowns on the next page, again, our healthy fund balances are nearly identical with the street fund losing a little money as operations prepares to get ready and invest in some equipment upgrades, et cetera, to begin in March, to begin the repairs to the streets. Just remember, these reports are a month behind. So I did want to say, one quarter, so after quarter one has finished, a quick summary of what we looked at in my office was income tax collections within .45% of projections are right on target. New collection efforts I've undertaken on the lodging tax has yielded quick results. That means the city should bring in three or four times the amount we brought in last year, and a year before we brought in like $200, so many more multiples than that. The lodging tax goes in the economic development fund is required to go to economic development. I guess I should say quickly, it's probably a planning issue, but I would like to speak at some point about what we do with the lodging tax. We have a few folks resisting collection efforts who don't want to pay. They talked to me on the phone about why they don't want to. Either they don't like where it goes, or they don't like that we levy it, so there are some options at council's disposal to ensure.
They don't have an option of paying, yeah?
That's correct. That's correct. That's correct. I just wanted you to know, there's definitely, it's not so far. I have been cases of people just being sneaky, it's just they just either pay it or they just don't want to, and we probably should have an enforcement mechanism.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
For example, the state sales tax, they'll issue an assessment where they estimate what you might owe, and then you have to pay that on top of what you should have paid. That is an example Mr. Hunter and I discussed recently is available to the city. Water and sewer funds are meeting projections for the first time in several years. We are currently waiting for property tax payments and American Rescue Plan funds. Both should come in May, knock on wood. All funds are at or near 25% target for expenditures, with the exception of the sewer fund, which is just over 27%. Quick summary, again, of March, the first state of Ohio penalty refund check came in. It'll add up to around $20,000. These are penalties we paid right when the SEP bus was made. We owed the state over $20,000, had to pay them. They're sending back everything except for $50 because my appeal won with the state tax commissioner. For everyone at home, trash charges are on your bills now. If you're a resident, there will be a trash charge. The agreement for the software upgrades was signed last week. The auditors have been on site for fiscal year 2020. We'll be back tomorrow and several more times, and this audit is on schedule for the first time in several years. Health insurance premiums were settled with the group at 0% increase. And income tax delinquencies, the penalties and back taxes owed from just one delinquent filer, who received a postcard reminder, paid for the postcards themselves in full, and overall, there seems to be increased compliance, so I'm feeling pretty good about that. If you're at home, you can see this report online at the website. So you didn't get that last $50? Didn't get the last $50. Geez, come on. They would not give me the last $50.
Thank you, Taylor.
Does anybody have questions? Yes.
So I was just wondering, what is the new collection effort on lodging?
Well, last year, the new collection effort was we just called them and mailed it. There was nothing in place before. So now, this time, I'm trying to reach them, not just at their place of business, but try and find out where the owners live, because not all the Airbnbs in town live here, and we are scanning BRVO and Airbnb and other websites for openings at Airbnbs or lodging at any time in the entire year. So we're not just picking busy times, we're taking any time to try and find anything that could be rented out, and if I don't know who they are, then we start searching for them.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. And I would say that the resistance is with two or three out of maybe two dozen, so it's not a lot, but could become problematic as the city gets busier from the Bailey's bike trip. Thank you, Taylor. Yes, thank you. Oh, and there's a credit card statement for you all to review under K-Law. If you have questions, come.
Mr. President, if there's no more discussion on the Treasurer and the Auditor's Report, I move to approve of February and March Treasurer and Auditor's Reports.
So we.
Mr. Grant? Yes. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor's Court in the report, in the roll call. I did not, I failed to have her print out for a report. I do know that last mayor's court, we levied over $4,000 in fines, I believe $4,002. I believe she collected about $2,000 that night. Mayor's Court is extremely busy, so for those of you out there that don't know, don't speak. So it is amazing, the total increase, it is astronomical. So I will get a formal report made up next time.
I can't say she gave me a report today where $7,100 was collected in March. 55 of that was owed to the city with the rest of the state agency, and I can send it to you guys if you want. It's a fantastic report, I thought it was one of the best I ever got, so thank you. Yes, please do. We did. Yes.
I don't know what call it is.
Yeah. They always let us. Good point.
Oh, I thought it was a prelude.
That's what they.
That's what they used to do. All right. Well, we'll have to get that report then. All right. Do we have any citizens' comments?
Nope.
All right. Business and organizational comments? Anything? Any committee discussions?
All right.
Police Department and Utility Department update? That was last one. This is code and fire, or. I'm just reading off. Let's go with code then. How about that? Let's go with the code update. Are you there, Ms. Barbara?
I am. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This morning, I sent out the 2020 year-end report. I hope everyone got that.
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to go skim through that really quick with you guys. I just want to say before I start, in 2020, the world changed as we knew it. It was a difficult time for many of us in the city. The code department had to change with the pandemic as well. Progress seemed slow at the beginning of the year, was shut down. However, we all learned how to do our job differently and evolved in ways to stay safe and healthy. I believe 2020 was a very successful year for the code enforcement department. As you drive through the city, you see a lot of progress happening, and I think that's proof to show. Together, we're going to review the 40-page report, but for obvious reasons, we'll just highlight the important information in blue font. Let me know if you have any questions at the end of the report. All right. So in 2020, we had 369 written warnings to code violators in the city. In 2009, we had a little over 400. There was a little bit of change, not much. In 2020, we had, out of those 369, we had 55 go to Nelsonville Mayor's Court. Eight of those went to Athens County Municipal Court. We had five civil citations issued and 314 compliance without court involvement. We had a lot of compliance in 2020, which makes me really happy. It was kind of rocky at the beginning, but then it became better. I think maybe it was because a lot of people were stuck home with COVID and they were doing a lot of work to their homes and a lot of cleanup, so I do appreciate the citizens for that. Now, on that report, I've left out how many complaints were actually either called in or were written complaints, and I had 136 complaints from the citizens and other folks that seen violations throughout the city. What we're going to do next is we're going to go to page two. This is just a outline of the case violation report, so these are all the cases. The 369 written warnings or verbal warnings in the city, that just covers all of those. Then we're going to skip to page 10, which is the code map, and you'll be able to see the code map. There's red dots that indicate cases throughout the city, so you'll be able to see where I've worked in the city in 2020. And then we're going to go to page 11, and we're going to talk about the finances. Last year, we brought in $5,720 in mayor's court costs, so that would be the court cost. The court fines were $6,875. The amount we actually collected was only $2,161, unfortunately. Rental registrations for last year, we collected $32,140. We had no civil citation fees that was collected. Vacant registration fees, $100. Zoning permits, $600. Lot split, $25. And contractor's registration was $225. So the total collected was $35,251, but the total fees together that was issued was $45,685. So we had lost on some rental, and we had lost on the court costs and the fines. All right. We'll go to the next page. I don't know, do you guys have the pages in front of you?
I'm working on it.
Yeah, I'm working on it. Computer.
Okay, good, good. All right. The next page is tire removal from the city. So our tire removal program was quite successful. We removed 2,650 tires from the city. These were tires that were abandoned in the city, whether it be properties or along the street. So that was a total savings of the citizens of Nelsonville, $13,250. And we're looking at about $5 a tire. I just estimated out as $5 a tire, because that's like a normal cost for a tire if you were to change your tires, you know, at a tire changing station, they would charge you $5 a tire. Page 13 is the buildings that were condemned, boarded, or demoed, whether they'd be demoed from the land bank, or an individual demoed them, or the city removed them. And there's a list of the addresses on page 13 that we had worked on. And then if you flip over to page 14, that's the 2020 rental properties. I'm sorry, the permit summary report by permit type. So this is just a report from Iwork that just gives us a list of the report, or I mean, the fees that we collected per month. Okay? And then page 15 is a list of the 2020 vacant property registrations. Those have been pretty successful. It's been lagging, folks have been slow actually sending in their applications. We're looking at folks that are now starting construction on a lot of these properties. So for 2021, we'll be looking at less properties that are vacant, that need to be registered. They're still vacant, that they're either being worked on, or they are a vacation house, or, you know, whatever our exemptions, their exemptions may be required by our city code. Then we'll go to page 18. Page 18 are just some photographs from 2020. One of them is Post Drive. I was really proud of this project and the individual that actually done the work, done excellent work. Those were two trailers that had caught fire, and they were right along the bike path, and those are now removed, and this is an after photo of the removal after the straw, and seed's been put down. That really cleaned that blight up in the area. It was just an excellent job and effort with everyone. The next photo is Poplar Street. If you guys are aware, if you drove down Path 770 or 784, of course, this report was generated a few months ago. I actually give this report in February, but because all the difficulties we've had getting in and for me to do my report, I wasn't able to present it. So now, when you look at these houses, they are no longer there if you drive past on Poplar Street. So the land bank took that property over once we secured it. It was sold to a gentleman out of town, and he has demoed those properties. He hasn't completed yet. He's waiting for clean fill and to remove the roll-off dumpster that he currently has, but I would say in a couple weeks, we'll see a huge change in that area. And then we've got Meyer Street. If you go to page 19 and 20, we've got a couple properties on Meyer Street that actually were condemned and boarded and secured. There was a lot of drug trafficking in that area, a lot of issues with that particular house, and that's been secured and cleaned. We're just waiting on the land bank to move in and there'd be possibly an end user for that property and restore it back to life. If you go to page 21, 21 through 40 is just a list of the registered rentals in the city. So these are the rentals that have actually paid their rental registration and are lawfully registered with the code office in the city of Nelsonville. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Becky. Mr. President, I have two questions. I can. Sure. I'm sorry, Mr. Barbara. Becky, do we have any procedure in place to try to collect the additional $10,000 that we have not received yet from some of those fines and citations that, in one of your previous slides there?
Right. So I believe when Mr. Sherman was filling in for Mr. Dunphy, I believe he was directing our council, or I mean, our clerk to either, well, send letters, first of all, get them back into court. If that doesn't work, then she was putting a block on their registration. So because she's been doing that, and these folks have been getting letters, we have been able to get a lot more money in, in the recent couple months. We actually had a guy that came in and paid like $500, it was his fines and his court costs, last Wednesday, and I was very surprised that he came in and he paid the whole amount because in fear of his registration being blocked and not being able to get his license.
Okay. And my second question is, do we still have access to the Ohio EPA Tire Forgiveness Program this year?
Yeah, I just, I actually just reapplied to that a couple months ago.
Okay.
I think we've got maybe 10 tires out there right now.
All right. Thank you very much, Becky.
Becky, are you still there?
I'm here.
I did have one question. When you was talking about mayor's court, that $5,000, was that for the entire year?
That is correct. I'm sorry.
That's on code. That's on code.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
That's code enforcement. So what we need to remember. So what we need to remember about code enforcement is we're not trying to make a lot of my own code, we're trying to get compliance. And if you look at the first sheet of the report, we had quite a few individuals that actually applied to the city code.
Tell Harry to be quiet, yeah.
Becky, I have a question, Elizabeth. In here, you have 2020 vacant property registration listed. Did these people actually register, or is this just a list of vacant properties you're aware of?
Well, this was in February when this was created. This is the list of properties that I knew of, and we probably got right around 45 people that's registered so far, made contact with me. We've got one bank that actually pays $100 that has a vacant property in the city. And I've been working with several people, because I, one of the, one of the clauses, they need to make sure they show me that they have insurance on their property. And so I've been waiting, you know, a lot of people's been faxing that information to me. And showing me proof that what they're doing with the vacant properties is indeed what they're doing. They're either remodeling, or, you know, they have to show me where they're for sale and that it's legitimately their for sale.
Okay, thank you.
It's a slow process. I think, I think every new program that we develop, it's always a slow process, and it's constant contacts with these folks and calling them and emailing them. It took a couple years for the rental registration to really get on board, and we collect, truly collect, the amount that, that people are actually renting in the city.
All right, thank you, Becky. Anyone else?
Sorry, you guys heard my dogs in the background and my kid come in.
That's all right.
That's why I said German Shepherd.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, now we are on, we did that last time, last week.
No, no, Chief Fitch is at home very ill.
Did he provide you anything that?
He did not, he was planning on being here today, then.
Catch him next time. All right. We're onto first reading of ordinance 32-21, will you help me introduce it?
Please introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending the 2021 appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance following $150,000 from the unappropriated balance.
Has left the conference.
Number 730, to line item number 730-730-21100, sanitation contract services. The sum of $5,000 from the unappropriated balance of the sanitation fund, number 730, to line item number 730-730-21110, billing expense. And $24,000 from the unappropriated balance of the water fund, to line item number 700-730-70030, water upgrades. Whereas appropriations ordinance needs to be amended to appropriate money for reuse and recycling collections and billing, and to repair Fayette Street due to a water line break. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Adams County, Ohio as follows. The 2021 appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate the following sums from the unappropriated balance to the designated line items. $150,000 from the unappropriated balance of the sanitation fund, number 730, to line item number 730-730-21100, sanitation contract services. The sum of $5,000 from the unappropriated balance of the sanitation fund, number 730, to line item number 730-730-31110, billing expense. And $24,000 from the unappropriated balance of the water fund, to line item number 700-730-70030, water upgrades. The total appropriations are increased by same amount. The ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law, fully enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules of the 25th day of April 2021.
Any council discussion on that? Motion to suspend?
I'll move to suspend. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Let's just keep going.
I'll second that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Yes. All right. 33-21, second reading. First reading, sorry. Need someone to introduce it.
I'll introduce it. An ordinance permitting the city manager or the city auditor to file a lien against the property taxes of property for non-payment of sanitation bill. Whereas it is desirable to permit the city manager or the city auditor to file a lien against the property taxes of property for non-payment of sanitation bill. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Adams County, Ohio as follows. The city manager or the city auditor are permitted to file a lien against the property taxes of property for non-payment of sanitation bill. The ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law, fully enacted by council on second reading, next day of May 2021.
So, city manager's report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. First one, firefighters. So I would like to point Mr. Scotty McKee from full-time down to part-time. I don't remember the formality.
It is, I make a motion, make a motion to take Scotty McKee from full-time to part-time on the city manager's recommendation.
Do we know why?
He's called the work on cars. He got a guaranteed salary. I'm gonna ask for a formal.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
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 So the second piece of that is, I would like to move firefighter Tom Mitchell from part-time to full-time on a temporary basis, and he would not start until after his pension requirements are satisfied.
Okay. Chief Barber, this is what he wishes also?
Yes, sir.
Just to cross it off my teeth.
I bet. Well, I can tell, I can tell. Uh, he wants to, he's gonna work on that certain certification first. All right, so a motion to appoint, to move Tom Mitchell to full-time temporarily.
Yeah, this is Carrie, you should have a time on that temporary.
Okay, six months?
Six months.
For six months.
Second that. Motion to move Tom Mitchell to full-time temporary for six months. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes. So if he meets his, all of his training criteria, then he'll permanently stay on as full-time, then that's the goal, or?
Yes, that is the goal. I'll come back and ask for the formal, but, yes.
After he's been there six months, after he's been there six months, it's automatically, it's gonna change from provisional to permanent.
Well, unless Harry extends it, correct?
But no, he can't extend it. Unless he terminates him and then reappoints him, anything over six months on a provisional basis is gonna become full-time automatically, permanent.
What is?
EMT test.
EMT test. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Uh, easy stuff. So the sweeper map has gone out, and I believe is in action. And I did not see this morning, but I wasn't here at that time this morning. I saw it on Canal Street this morning. Oh, perfect. Well, then it's working.
It is.
And basically, for those at home, essentially, the sweeper's gonna be on your street the day after your trash is picked up. And then, whether it's even or odd, it's on our map, it's on our Facebook page, it's on our webpage. You can email us or call us and we can send it to you. But that is outside. The intention is to run that thing five days a week for four hours a day, so.
Well, I'm just a little bit confused. If it's, say, the day after trash, but it's not even or, how do you know if your day's even or odd? That would be two days after trash, right?
Well, if, actually gets picked up on Monday, and it's the 20th, the next day, Tuesday, would be the 21st, so that would be the odd side of the street.
So when would the even get done then?
The following week.
Oh, the following week. Okay.
Alternating. You got you. All right, give me a second. So we can't have inside the street.
Yeah, I was confused. I'm like.
Yeah, and every seven days, so it alternates.
What are, what are the hours?
4:00 to 8:00.
4:00 AM.
4:00 AM to 8:00 AM. Pothole operations have begun. They're working on concrete holes, the bigger ones on Canal Street, which is big. I believe the plan, depending on the weather, is to put asphalt down possibly tomorrow, but if not by the end of the week, as long as the rain cooperates. I got some questions from people at home, so I just wanted to put it back out there. The ATV, UTV post that Chief Fitch put out last week, we only took it down just for rewarding because at the time, we weren't aware that there was an ordinance authorizing it, basically, excuse me, word for word what the ORC says, and we were just having technical difficulties. So that will be adjusted when he comes back to work, and then it'll be put back out. There's no change, it's not going anywhere. As long as your UTV, ATV meets the state of Ohio requirements, there's nothing to stop you from going wherever you want. On being in the street, can't just go across the square, it's not gonna work out. Those three. Just a reminder for everybody, if you have an event on the square, make sure you get a permit. That way, we don't miss anything when we're putting out barricades and it doesn't slip through the cracks. And the last thing I got is, I'd like to have utility meeting, pretty same.
I was gonna ask that anyway, because we talked about a couple trash items today that may, may require a new ordinance. So, when, who serves all the utilities you're with? Okay, what's, what's good for you guys as far as the things go?
Anytime.
I, I coach PLE baseball on Tuesday nights from 5 to Thursday night.
Tuesday, Thursday, okay. Mr. Manager, what's your, you're really, it sounds like you're the one that probably has the most going on as far as he thinks that, so.
You guys want to do it this Wednesday?
Yeah, Mayor's Court.
Mayor's Court this Wednesday.
You said Tuesday, Thursday, so we could do it next Monday.
I'm okay with that. I'm good with that.
6 o'clock, all right with you guys?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. That was on my mind.
And just one seat I wanna plant, one of the big things we need to talk about is staying on track with the sewer rates per the engineer's recommendation of every six months. So July 1st is right around the corner for the next sewer rate. As far as I know, there'll be no adjustment to the water rates. All right. That's all, Ann.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Appreciate it. All right. We're into the goodie order. Okay. Ms. Jones, please, call, please.
Shocking, I don't really count it.
You just got back.
I did. I'm really out of town.
Somebody in your little camera.
Really, just, I know a lot of our, our students are taking elementary school, middle school, state tests right now, so just encourage them to do well as they finish off the end of the year.
We're going to order.
Yep, Mr. Fitch.
Yeah, I wanna, you know, thank the city manager for the job he's been doing here. Job well done. I wanna congratulate him on what I felt was a very positive evaluation that we discussed. And I look forward to having him here for years to come, and looking forward to all the additional goals that we will set and need. And so I'm very excited about that, and I appreciate all your efforts and all your work that you put in. Because I know it's been kinda chaotic over the last year or so. I appreciate that. Also, oh, I'm sorry. Got a little, or something else that I forgot. Got sidetracked. But thank you.
I just wanna say that Chili Cook Off was a big success. We raised $1,270 for hoopasses this year. I don't know what donations were, but I don't have that information. But also, we're gonna vintage campers on the square again this year, June 5th.
Vintage campers.
Vintage campers.
Oh, I said vintage campers.
Vintage.
Okay.
June 5th. We already have 15 campers, we've got a month to go for more registration. All the proceeds for that will go back to the city again for, I believe, children's camp. So there's a camp uploaded, we're gonna try contacting to camps, cause we'll put some children to camps. That's all I got. That's it. Oh, by the way.
Oh, by the way. Want to work?
Want to work, Mr. President?
It's, uh, thank God for us here, no more snow hopefully. I'd just like to thank all the city workers once again for their relentless efforts in this town. It is nice to see them, they are everywhere, at any hour, at any point, at any moment in time, they can appear out of anywhere. So, I know the guys are working hard. I've seen them run the Zack Hammer, filling blood holes as a team. It takes a team, and I'd like to thank all of their hard work, so.
Um, it seems like a lot of things might be coming back this year that we haven't had last year, and I was just wanting to see if everyone could maybe plan out their summer and take some time to volunteer. We're gonna have a lot of opportunities. People are getting some cleanups ready. I heard we're having Pride of the Hills this year. They can always use volunteers, even if you only have four, eight hours a week. If you get in touch with them, I'll be sure they could use you and some of these other people that are looking for some volunteers.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Booth? Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanna echo everybody's comments about all city employees. Sounds like I say this every time, but thanks to all you guys. I do, right? Hopeful times, hopeful times coming, Nelsonville, you work at their prom last Saturday. I knew, I thought you were gonna go for that, steal my thunder. It was nice to see the kids have a good time. I know my daughter had a great time, dressed up and then whatever kind of non-traditional thing, had a lot of fun stuff, activities, things like that. I know those kids have been through a lot this year, like the rest of us, and it was nice that they were able to cut loose a bit, have a good time. I can see that, thank you.
Well, thank you. All right, we are to motion to adjourn. Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant? Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.